Welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting for September the 5th, 2023. If you would at this time stand for the invocation by Janet Gaston and pledge of allegiance by Buddy Palmer.
Blessed be. Heavenly Father, James 1:5 says that if any of you likes wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. Please grant us wisdom as we make important decisions about this year's budget. Help us to be good stewards of the prosperity that you have blessed us with. Give us insight and clarity into what needs to be done to keep our city on the path of growth while maintaining safety, unity, and quality of life. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight, we've got some special guests with us that will do our pledge. They're from the Boy Scout Troop 12, sponsored by the United Methodist Church. They're working on their merit badges for citizenship in the community and communications. The merit badge coordinator is Mr. Duke Logan. Logan and scouts will be Mr. Will West and Mr. Caleb Kendricks. If you two gentlemen would come up and lead us in our pledge.
Attention, so. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
This time, I'll call on Councilwoman Nettie Davis to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
I move that we will confirm and amend the agenda and the agenda order.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all approved. Proclamations, recognitions, and report agenda. Proclamations.
Yes, we have one. Bishop Bishop Clarence Parks, would you come up, please?
Do you want to say the parents' names of the kids? Boy Scouts? Yeah.
To read this proclamation. Whereas Bishop Clarence Lee Parks was born to Mac and Eugene Parks on September 3rd, 1953. At seven days old, Pastor's grandmother declared, "This will be my preacher." Bishop Parks accepted the Lord and His Savior in 1974 and began his work for Christ as an evangelist. I can't talk enough for me. You got to be nervous. And whereas in 1986, Bishop Parks became the inter pastor of Piney Grove Baptist Church, who stayed there for about a year before God called him to start on his lifelong work. He and his wife Mary found a temple of compassion and deliverance in April 1988 with less than 10 members. And whereas hundreds of souls have been brought to Christ, thousands of people fed as well as hundreds of people clothed and housed through the work of Bishop Parks and the Temple of Compassion and Deliverance for the glory of God. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of City Tupelo, Mississippi, hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, is Bishop Clarence Lee Parks today. All right. I just want to say, this really caught me by surprise, but I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Jordan. I want to thank the council, the people for asking me to be doing this. I say all the time, if you would be nice to me, they don't have to. They can turn their kindness to someone else. Not that they're being mean, but they can choose somebody else to be nice to. I thank you all, Charles, for being nice to me today. I just want to appreciate it. I love Tupelo. I love our city. I live in District. I was raised there. And I go back there every now and then to visit. This came from a family reunion there. If I had to choose to live anywhere and raise my children, it would be Tupelo, Mississippi.
All right. All right. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Recognition, boy scouts and girl scouts. Mr. Palmer, just want to say.
Yes. Again, Duke, we appreciate you bringing these young men here, and we appreciate the job you do in the Boy Scouts. It's a great organization. You two young men did a great job on the pledge, and we appreciate it. And this is a fun place. You're going to have a lot of fun tonight. If you're going to leave, I would recommend that too. So we appreciate y'all coming out.
Employee recognition.
Yes, we have several ladies, President. The first is Tanya Richardson. Come on up. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Tanya Richardson for 25 years of service with the Tupelo Department of Defense. All right. Christian Stute, come on up. Did I say her name?
Oh, no. Okay.
With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Christian Stute for 10 years dedicated service with the Tupelo Fire Department. Sam Bell. Come on up. Sam and I go way back. I want this guy to take me. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Sam Bell, Tupelo Police Department, for 25 years of dedicated employment. Jacob Whitlock.
With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Jacob Whitlock for 15 years of dedicated employment with Tupelo Police Department.
Chris Lewis. Chris, it's crazy. Didn't make it. All right. Jonas Walker. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Jonas Walker for 15 years of dedicated employment with Tupelo Water Light Department.
I'll start with Ms. Nettie.
I would like to mention several events that are going on next few days in the community. One is the Community Fire Festival, which we have been having for 18 years. And it's a festival where the police and the community work together, try to encourage community-oriented policing. And so this event will be September 16th at the Gumtree Park, and we would like for you to come. We have plenty of bands, food, vendors, Kids Zone, three-on-three basketball. There's all kind of activities, and we'd like for you to come out for a day of fun for that event. And I'd like to mention that on Saturday night at St. Paul United Methodist Church, James Hull will be having his Trail Bracers event. And they will be having Mississippi Mass Choir, is that right? Bishop Parks, Mass Choir there to perform along with other persons who will be recognized for outstanding services they provide in the community. This will be Saturday at 6:30 at St. Paul Christian Life Center, so we'd like to invite you to come out to that also.
I'd like for everybody to keep Bev Crossen and her family for the loss of her husband, Carl, this past weekend. Bev and Carl have done more than most folks can imagine to the downtown community with their investments in buildings and businesses, and it's truly a great loss to the community.
So. Sure.
I just want to thank Bishop Parks for all the work he does in our community, and thanks Ms. Nettie for the Fire Festival, building a bridge between the community and the police.
I just want to recognize Matthew Robinson, who is the founder of the Festival of Change. This past weekend was the second year in a row we've had that, and it was a big success. And a lot of people volunteered a lot of hours and made it successful again this year. I think it grew and probably keeps growing. Excited for that.
Mr. Chad.
I'm good.
I have one recognition, just a shout out to Tupelo Schools. This past Thursday night, Tupelo High School offered their football field to Amory Schools because they lost their football field in the tornado. The City of Tupelo placed flags on Main Street, and I was at the game. And the people in Amory were so appreciative of the City of Tupelo and Tupelo High School reaching out to them and offering them a place to play football. And it was a great game, 10,000 in attendance, according to the people from Amory. Now, I don't know if they can count that high or not, but that's what they said. But anyway, shout out to Tupelo for inviting them. And I think the mayor did the coin flip.
I did, and the Amory mayor was very appreciative of, you know, what we've done for them. So, you know, who knows? We might be our surrounding community one day when we have something happen because, you know, it's not ill between them. It will happen, and we will need our neighbors. And, you know, that's just a Christian thing to do, is to call on your neighbors and your neighbors to be there for you. So just another thing, the change festival, again, that I went down, that was a great event. It was well-attended, so, you know, good job by Matt and everybody else. Lucia, thank you for your participation. If you had any. That's it. I don't have anything else to say.
This time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Public agenda, public hearings in matter of public hearing, 2023 tax levy. In the matter of public hearings for demolitions, is anyone here to speak to demolitions? In the matter of public hearings for lotmowing, does anyone here speak to lotmowing? Matter of public hearings for rezoning application, RZ 22-03, anyone here to speak to the rezon? There are none. We'll move forward. Close the public agenda and open the regular session. The action agenda. In the matter of approval of a regular meeting on August 15th and special call meeting on August 22nd, 2023.
So. Second.
A motion and a second. Is any discussion? All approved. In the matter of bill pay.
I move that we pay the bill.
Second.
A motion and a second. The bills tonight were paid by Janet Gaston, Travis Beard, Nettie Davis, Buddy Palmer, and all in favor? In the matter of advertising and promotional items, we have none. In the matter of the tax roll for the 2023 tax year. Ms. Hannah? Do we need a motion and a second? So move.
Second.
Motion and a second now.
Yes, this is the 2023 tax roll that is provided to us by the Lake County Tax Assessor. This is done annually, and it's required that council or board adopt this tax roll or present it to for your adoption. I've also included the abatements that have been awarded throughout the year as well as prior years that are still in effect and the exemptions of real and personal property.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of surplus of fixed assets to return to vendor for credit. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Hannah.
Yes, sir. These items are connected with a contract that we are no longer under with our cell service provider, our prior cell service provider. These are no longer working, and we're asking to surplus these and send these back to that provider.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of budget amendment number 10 for fiscal year 2023. So move. Second. Motion and a second, Ms. Hannah.
Yes, this is the 10th budget amendment for fiscal year. We are asking to amend several funds, the first being the general fund. We're asking to increase that $69,785, which includes additional equipment that we would like to purchase with the sale of equipment. We would like to use that $18,850 as well as to use $20,000 additional funds that we received at the Police Training Academy. We would like to use that for supplies at the Training Academy, and we would also like to accept a donation for $30,935 from the sports council for both the white facility and the parking rack facility. The only additional item that we would like to do in the general fund is to actually transfer $104,000 from the contingency money that we set aside to Police Department Services for the command center. We authorized or presented to or used a contract for the provider, the software provider. We have a contract with them, and the payment started in 2023, so we would like to amend the budget to pay for that. The other fund that we're asking to amend is the Capital Infrastructure Fund. We're asking to transfer $2.6 million from the Municipal Reserve for the purpose of the West Main Bridge, that repair, that demolition and repair is an estimate that will be around $2.6 million. We're also asking to amend the budget for $2,541 for a match grant that was by order of the council at the last council meeting to provide that match to the carnation plant for that improvement, as well as to increase the Enwood Road project by $85,000. We did receive the bids. We're presenting those to you tonight, that $85,000 along with the design and the extra fees, the right of way that we've had to pay that will take care, as long as there's no page orders, that will take care of that project. The other two funds that we would like to present to you for amendment is setting up the Arbor Project Fund in the amount of $10,654,545 to you for to set those projects up. Those are the CD projects, not the water tour project, but the CD projects, as well as the Municipal Reserve Fund. We're asking to amend that $2.32541 for the purpose of transferring those amounts to the capital funding. So I know that's a lot of numbers, but we're just asking that's general housekeeping and set those projects up and have them presented.
Any question? All in favor? This is a lengthy one here in the matter of resolution authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bond in one or more series not to exceed $12 million to raise money for capital projects as described in this resolution directing the preparation and delivery thereof, authorizing the sale of said bond to the Mississippi Development Bank and the sale of the not to exceed $12 million in Mississippi Development Bank Special Obligation Bond Series 2023 in one or more series and for related purposes.
You want to do all this and package us individually?
It's all one thing.
One thing. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Hannah.
Yes. This is in keeping with the budget and the capital plan in the budget. We've got several items in the amount of $12 million that we would like to present to you in the budget next week. But I just would like to say that Elizabeth is here if you have any questions about taking this to Mississippi Development Bank next week. That's September the 13th. That doesn't mean we're going to issue them anytime soon. We could issue them depending on what the market does, but this actually places us in a good position. We would probably be about two weeks out once it's approved. We've got to get rated by Moody's. We're going to go ahead and take it to the Mississippi Development Bank, but this gets us in a good position to issue the bonds if we need the cash flow to take care of some of the projects that we have presented to you. And as Leah Norris also explained this morning, the market is very volatile. And Elizabeth is here with us.
Questions for Elizabeth?
Happy to answer any.
We have none.
Okay.
All in favor?
I like it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the matter of appointment of Brad Robinson as Tupelo Fire Chief.
So move.
Second.
I would like.
A motion and a second. Mayor, do you have it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Brad Robinson, 24-year veteran, Tupelo Fire Department, and he's been captain since 2008, deputy chief of operations since October 2022. A couple of minutes ago, the council unanimous, unanimous, helped me out. Everyone on the council voted as an ender of position, and I think Brad will be a great chief, so I appreciate your recommendation and appreciate you both.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Ms. Nettie.
I see dissenting in the community, and there's, I don't like that. I like for us to sit down at the table and try to work issues out, and at this time, I just cannot support this recommendation, not that I'm not a young man that's been recommended, but I feel like we need to look at it a little more and so that we will make the right decision on this. So at this time, I can't support the recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also ask to be able to discuss the matter at hand. I too have not been able to check all of the other recommendations or the applicants that were here, and I do ask that we reconsider and try to come to agreement or at least try to discuss as a whole the appointment. And if not, then I too will not be able to support because of the comments that has been brought before me by the community, which is starting to divide several issues on the hiring process. So.
Another discussion.
You know, I'm not privy to some of the other conversations that have gone on. I know personally Brad is a, he and I go back a ways. I think he's a great guy. I'm fully in support of him, and not to say they're not, but I'm prepared to support him tonight.
Anybody that have comment? I'll just make a personal comment. I too was presented with the fact that there was some dissent in the community over the recommendation as to whether we followed procedure and if everybody had the equal opportunity to be employed. I support the form of government that Tupelo has, which is strong there, we counsel, and we do approve his recommendations, or don't approve his recommendation based on how we feel. I was this morning in our discussion, supported by the Human Resource Department, that all the people that were interviewed were qualified for the job. And so therefore, I would be in favor of supporting our form of government and the mayor's recommendation. So at this time, we'll vote all in favor. Opposed? Likewise, passes five to two. In the matter of appointment of Harold Wilson as chairman to the Community Outreach Task Force. So move. Second. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Reverend Wilson is here tonight. He is the founding pastor of the New Dimension Community Church in East Tupelo. He's also made to former of Miss Tupelo and current employee of Kansas State, Gassaway. They have six children, and he and his senior.
Would he stand?
Yes.
And would you say a few words? Would you say a few words to the council?
Sure.
You had to, you had to, long walk.
I really want you to see my wife and then my daughter.
Well, yeah, bring her with you. Bring her on up.
I believe I will be a shoe-in if she's the reason for it. I thank you for the opportunity, mayor and council, that I have to serve on this committee. It's really had a positive impact on our community, and our Canna Street Festival has been a direct recipient of this community's commitment to the community to help lift all of our community spirits. So I think it's an honor to serve, have our team serve on the committee, and Dr. Rice has done a great job, or even Reverend Craver as well. And so I just feel honored for the opportunity, and we have my commitment that we will try to make it as, community makes us good and as better as we can to help serve all the communities of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the matter of review, approve properties for lotmowing. Move to approve. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Hannah, you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. I'd ask that you approve the final list.
We got it approved. 15, in the matter of review, approve properties for demolition. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. President, tonight, we have two properties that the Department of Development Services is requesting approval for demolition. Point is 2607 Mount Vernon Road. That is a house that is a burnout. We've been working with that property owner to try to get it cleaned up to no avail, so I ask the council to approve that demolition cleanup. Then also, we have 386 Highway 6 West, which is really. But also we have 386 Highway 6 West, which is really West Main Street. Several dilapidated abandoned buildings there. Ask for approval to demolish and clean up those buildings as well.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of rezoning application, RZ 22-03.
I move that we would approve the rezoning application.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Newman?
Yes, Mr. President, this is really a zoning map correction, an application by the Department of Development Services to rezone the parcels along the northern loop. When the current zoning map was adopted 10 years ago, the northern loop or Barnes Crossing West was not built, was not complete. And so all of that property along the northern loop is currently zoned agriculture, which does not allow for the development of those parcels. And so this request would rezonate those parcels 800 feet from the center line of the street to mixed-use commercial corridor to allow for future development.
Any question?
I do have a question, just because I've had someone reach out to me. 800 feet as far as like Ravenwood, for example, wouldn't even come close to the back of that neighborhood if I'm right, been looking at that. I don't know if you're.
I've got the maps here in the, in the back.
Yeah, okay. So we would be clear, that was the only, only concern I'd had from any.
This is the whole, basically open field.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Loeb?
It's 800 feet from center line.
Oh, from center line? Yeah, okay, that was it.
This rezoning would not alter the present use or the present taxable property, the deal in the commercial development of West Main Street.
Just as a point of information, I believe that what the, both the item number four, I guess, and also this item, it's a rezoning number 2302, not 2203, just a transposition there.
I would have caught that. All in favor? In the matter of MDAH CLG grant for Spring Hill Baptist Church.
I move that we would approve the CLG grant.
Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Newman?
Mr. President, this is an agreement for architectural services, which is part of the city's assistance toward preserving the historic Spring Hill Missionary Baptist Church. Just ask the council to approve this agreement. This will be for preliminary architectural services. This is with Belinda Stewart Architects, two separate, I guess, reports here, $10,000 a piece, so $20,000 expense.
Question? All in favor? In the matter of review, approve liens for Lot Knoway.
So moved.
Second. Okay, that's Mr. Dennis. You have anything to say on that one other than to just lien set for the people who didn't know the yard? Okay, all in favor? In the matter of approving and adding NMNU C's vehicle to asset list.
That's on move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. You want to come up and explain?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, yes, there is a Norwegian narcotics, 2009 GMC Yukon that receives after an narcotics date.
Okay, any question? All in favor? In the matter of memorandating of understanding between TPD, Tupelo Police Department and the US Secret Service. Do I have a motion? Or you skipped one?
Yeah.
I skipped one? Sorry about that. I'm in a hurry. In the matter of approving NMNU Sergeant Daniel Shepherd to be added to the pay list for pipe checks. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Hill?
Sergeant Shepherd, new promoter, sergeant, and just adding him along with Captain Beth Smith to this receiving.
Question? All in, uh-oh.
Yeah, what is a pipe check?
Is purchase information and purchase evidence.
Okay. Can you explain it too?
Yeah, that's, that's good. Thank you.
All in favor? In the matter of MOU between TPD and US Secret Service.
I move that we approve the MOU.
Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Hill?
This is a memorandum of understanding between US Secret Service and Tupelo Police Department and officers that work with them doing official investigations.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of bid approval, 12 months materials and delivery bid number 2023-039PW.
Move to purchase bid approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, Chuck?
Yes, sir. This is our year of the bid for materials. We had, we got 11 lines on here. We had five bidders responded. We're asking that Hodges get eight of them, crosswind you two, and Tim might get one for lowest of best. We also have the offer of bid on there. All this is about for you.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of bid approval for the Enville Road widening safety improvements, project bid number 2023-022PW. Do I have a motion?
I move that we will approve the Enville Road widening improvement project.
Second. Motion in a second, Chuck?
Yes, sir. This is our project. We've been trying to be going for a while, Enville Road. We have three bidders responding, Hodges is lowest of best, and we just ask for the approval of this bid.
Question? All in favor? In the matter of contract approval for City Park Drainage Improvements, ARPA 2023-028PW.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, Chuck?
We're asking for approval of contracts.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of contract approval for Van Deere Drainage Improvements, ARPA 2023-032PW.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, the same, just ask for approval, all in favor? In the matter of contract approval for Gumtree Park Drainage Improvements, ARPA 2023-09PW.
I move that we would approve the Gumtree Park Drainage Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion in a second, same thing, just approving the contract, all in favor?
Thank you.
On the matter of surplus fixed item, fixed asset items for August 2023.
So moved.
Second. A motion in a second, Mr. Farland is here.
So I ask for y'all tonight, we have some workout equipment that's out at Ballard Park that is 12-plus years old. And through the Healthy Heroes Program that we've been doing and got grant money from Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're going to replace that workout equipment with some updated new equipment and just ask for y'all's approval on this so we can surplus the old equipment.
Any idea when this change will take place, the new equipment and that sort of thing?
So I'm hoping that that will, I'm hoping that this, the new equipment will actually get delivered this month. And, and so, once we get it on hand, then we'll, we'll work it in because it'll be our guys that will be installing it.
How much was a grant for?
$99,616. And that, that goes for the workout equipment at Ballard, but also an updated playground at Robbins Field.
All in favor? In the matter of approval of Catlin Spine Arena Minutes of July 17, 2023. Move to approve these minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? In the matter of request to reject bid number 2023-038WL, LED, excuse me, LED luminary area, six-month supply bid.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Simmons?
Because approximately the last three years you've been approving a six-month supply bid for LED lighting, we're pretty well 99% complete with LED lighting, other than security parking lot lighting, that type stuff. So I'd like to reject this bid and then we'll just two vote as we move these LEDs to settle at these higher prices.
All in favor? In the matter of bid award, 2023-037WL Water Materials, six-month supply bid. So moved. Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, this is a six-month bid supply for water supplies, all of the different materials we use in the water sewer department. As you can see, the two most bidders were consolidating pipe, the southern pipe, which are both local companies, so I would recommend this typically.
All in favor? In the matter of approval of change order number one for the Highway 45 Sewer Outfall Project Bid Number 2023-019WL. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, and this was actually a 1.4 million dollar project on Highway 45 North where we actually replaced all the sewer system to the housing project and to the apartment complex, just all of those projects. In, in the process, the director boring under 45 Highway, when the contractor was tying in on the west side, discovered that the piping from that point on to the housing project was concrete pipe. So I would expect to continue to change this pipe out, it's 320 foot, eight inch to be replaced, and that's at $78,175.
Any question? All in favor? Thank you, John. In the matter of final resolution for Leggett and Platt, number 0341, number 0908, and number 4201.
Move to approve this final resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Logan?
Yes, this is the return from the Department of Revenue, the, the approval of the tax exemption for Leggett and Platt, beginning in 2024 and, I guess, in 2033 in December that year. It's for about $800,000 of primarily new equipment, maybe some inventory in there as well.
Any question? All in favor? Number 33, in the matter of donation of streets and alleyways in the villages complex, we are tabling that item for a next meeting, hopefully. I'll make a motion, we table that item. Second. Motion in a second, all in favor? 34, in the matter of an order accepting a conveyance of real property located at 120 South Highland Drive and declaring as surplus the structures located at said property and to authorize the demolition of the surplus structures. So moved.
Seven.
Motion in a second, Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Beard. The next three items, these are all properties that we purchased within the last week by order of council. After, after closing on these properties, we are bringing them back and for acceptance from the city council. Also, the, as was discussed in a prior meeting, the houses and the structures that owned the property the last day, the council will need to move forward the demolition of those. So I will request that we surplus those, those structures and move forward.
Any question? All in favor? In the matter of an order accepting a conveyance of real property located at 124 South Highland Drive and declaring as surplus the structures located at said property and to authorize the demolition of the surplus structures.
I move that we would approve this order.
Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Reed, that's the same explanation we had on the previous one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? In the matter of an order accepting a conveyance of real property located at 1507 Forest Street and declaring as surplus the structures located at said property and to authorize the demolition of the surplus structures. Move to accept this order.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? In the matter of city council chambers contract. So moved. Second. Motion in a second. Don Lewis?
Mr. President, yes, sir. This is just, the council has approved this and awarded the bid to CIG, but this is the actual contract for you to approve, so that'd be signed. Hopefully work will start after the next council meeting is in place right now.
Any question? All in favor? Study agenda, we have no items, executive session, Mr. Logan?
None, your honor. I mean, none.
Do I have a motion? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. So moved. Motion in a second to adjourn.